All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the April 22, 2024, meeting for the Greenville City Council and Greenville Utilities. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly. I'll be presiding over the meeting along with my colleague here, Chairman Geiger.
Hello?
I think he's going to call the meeting to order as well. And first, I'd like to call, I guess, our city clerk for the roll call.
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Proton Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Present.
Councilmember Scully?
Here.
Councilmember Robinson?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
All right, Mayor Connolly, you've got it formed.
Thank you very much.
All right, on behalf of Greenville Utilities, I'm going to call this meeting to order as well and ask Amy Wade to ascertain whether we have a quorum.
Okay, Chair Geiger, I'll call the roll real quick. Chair Geiger?
Here.
Commissioner Griffin is absent. Commissioner Blunt is absent. Commissioner Stotin?
Here.
Commissioner Gardner?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Cowan?
Here.
Commissioner Godley?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Mr. Manager, any?
No recommended changes, Mayor.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, motions made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda from the GUC side.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
All right, we'll move on to the public comment period for issues that are germane to both the City Council and Greenville Utilities Commission Board. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be subject to a public hearing conducted this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who registered with the city clerk will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who do not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Yes, sir. First speaker is Ms. Molly Holdeman. Ms. Holdeman, you've got three minutes to address the mayor and council as well as the GUC Commission.
I would like to thank all the employees of Greenville Utilities who work so hard and often in very dangerous situations to keep electricity running in our homes and businesses. And on this Earth Day, I respectfully ask for City Council and GUC to keep environmental responsibility at the forefront of every decision you make. Goals and priorities of this City Council include enhancing, quote, "community engagement, safety, wellness, and environmental responsibility." The purpose of GUC is to enhance the quality of life for those we serve by safely providing reliable utility solutions at the lowest reasonable cost with exceptional customer service in an environmentally responsible manner. The citizens of Greenville elect the City Council. Under state statute, GUC is required to submit its budgets to City Council. The North Carolina Utility Commission only regulates Duke and Dominion, not GUC. Oversight has to come from Greenville City Council. One GUC project in particular stood out to me, Capital Project ECP 10 to 18, the transmission line from the Belvoir Substation Mount Pleasant to the Industrial Park Substation Sub Parkway. While GUC maintains that this project is the beginning of a redundancy ring around the county to help divert power in case of outages, the proximity of those two substations to formerly proposed crypto mining sites near Belvoir Elementary and on the property of one of GUC's board members, the timing of cutting down trees for the project before the City Council even passed the ordinances, and the backdoor nature of the entire Compute North saga are cause for skepticism. Another cause for skepticism is the price tag. Last January, City Council voted to amend the budget for that project to $12,692,000. Is GUC really planning to replicate that all over the county? The giant unsightly utility poles for this project have been installed, and instead of running the line on the right-of-way between the eastern side of Highway 11 and the railroad tracks, GUC chose the front yard of Welcome Middle School. Sadly, the Compute North situation and the new aesthetic of Welcome Middle School speak volumes about GUC's priorities. Trust is the easiest thing in the world to lose and the hardest thing in the world to give back. In the Book of Genesis, God made man steward of His creation. In the New Testament, First John entreats us to love, not in word or speech, but in truth and action. I hope that GUC will make a special effort to beautify Welcome as much as possible with stump removal and significant landscaping improvements, and hopefully ongoing student engagement and school support, and will reflect upon its customer shareholders' opposition to crypto mining and as an opportunity to refocus on community engagement and environmentally sustainable efforts. And I hope that the council will continue to work on transparency and accountability for the good of all Greenvilleians. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
There are no additional registered speakers, Mayor Connolly.
Anybody else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Mark Parker. I'm a member of CARE. And basically, I kind of just want to highlight some same things that Molly said. We just want to take the time to just let everyone know that we want to actually want the council and GUC to gain our trust. Like I said, we're the citizens of Greenville. And I go to the homepage and it says, "GUC is owned by the citizens." So if we're owned by the citizens, the owner should have some say or some stake in it. I looked at the, I read the charter, and it said, "How you pick your board members." And it's just certain sectors, but it doesn't include all of the citizens of Greenville. So when are we all going to just get on the same page and work together? Hey, I work, I have a technical job. I work medical scrubs, but I'm very highly technical, physics, chemistry, all the tech stuff. It's just saying that we need diversity on the boards, all across, all across Pitt County, all across Greenville, and any other place that has a board in this area. Because, just like I said, not just to get lost in the crypto thing, but choices were made, decisions were made that actually would have been, if it didn't fall through, that actually would have been detrimental for our area. So what we're just saying is, we're the people of Greenville, all our voices heard, and we want to be part of the decisions, want to be part of the problem solving. We're a community, not just one part of the community. It should be all of the community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker? I'm sorry, no one else. Anybody else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Ann Maxwell, and I have spoken many times about the Horizons Plan. But back when Floyd occurred and there was so much flooding and devastation everywhere, and I saw so many people have to move out of their homes, I personally helped, I became involved in learning about what was going on in Greenville. I went to geology lectures, and I talked to Stan Riggs. I did a lot of things. I got involved with the Environmental Advisory Commission, served on it for six years, and I was on the Horizons Committee. And it was a very meaningful committee, and a lot of things, a lot of people came and gave input. We had meetings at the Willis Building, we had meetings at River Park North, at the Convention Center. And in all of those settings, people expressed what they wanted to see in Greenville. And I am so sad that we're eight years into the plan, and we are still not dealing with it. We would not have had the issue come up about the crypto mining had we really been adhering to the plan that was adopted by the council and the citizens of this community. And when you, when it says here, "One of the sustainability themes, this plan works to ensure that the natural environment and ecosystems on which we depend are protected, and the Greenville community protects itself from increasingly volatile weather events, and that the community seeks ways to reduce its reliance on finite natural resources." And we would have been using exponentially more of our resources than we need to. But hopefully, that's gone. But I still want us to really work as a community to look at a plan that was developed for our citizens, and really, there are action items. I don't know that any of them have ever been accomplished. And we only have two more years, and then it'll be time again to use taxpayers' money to hire somebody to come in because we are supposed to have a long-range plan. Every city is. So I just ask that you really embrace what citizens have asked for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and we'll move on to new business. Mr. Manager?
Yes, first item under new business is approval of minutes for the September 14, 2023 Joint City Council Greenville Utilities Commission Board meeting.
Do we have a motion to approve by the council?
So moved.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Scully. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion from the GUC side?
So moved to approve the minutes.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Item number two?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number two is consideration of market adjustment merit allocation for fiscal year 2024-25. I call forward City of Greenville Director of Human Resources Leah Futrell for the presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm joined this afternoon, or this evening, by Richie Shreves, GUC's HR Director, so we're going to be doing this sort of in tandem. But to get us started, each year, the city and GUC review the competitive posture of the Joint Pay Plan. And we do that really for two reasons, or with two objectives in mind. One being internal equity and compatibility between the two plans, and then, secondly, how the Joint Pay Plan compares to the external marketplace. And we utilize a variety of sources so that we are coming to you all with good information so that you can make an informed decision. And the data that we rely upon are salary market surveys, public sector benchmarks, and local private employers' information. With regard to the published surveys, we have traditionally used the surveys that you see listed on the slide. And for 2024, you'll see for each of those surveys, the projected wage increase. Catapult is the first one that's listed, and that's the index or the survey that we've used traditionally as the primary benchmark because they're North Carolina-associated. And they're projecting a 3.7% increase. ERI, 3.9. Coin Fairy, 4%. Mercer, 3.9. The Conference Board, 4.1. Willis Towers Watson, 4%. World at Work, 4.1, which is an average of 4%. And for each of those surveys, when you compare the highest of 4.1% to the lowest of 3.7%, that's less than a half percent difference between the surveys. Again, one of those items that we look at are our public sector benchmark organizations. And traditionally, we've used 26 public sector benchmark organizations, which is a mix of municipalities and utilities. For the current fiscal year, 2324, 24 of those organizations responded to us when we say, "Hey, what did you all do for this current fiscal year with regard to pay increases?" And the average increase is 5.5%. We also asked those same 26 benchmarks, "What are you planning for the upcoming fiscal year?" And seven of those organizations responded, and the average projected increase is 5.3%. Keep in mind that it's very early in the budget planning phase for most of these organizations, so we were only able to get about 25% of those organizations to provide us projections for the upcoming fiscal year. We also approached our local private employers from the Greenville and surrounding area, and we asked them, "What did you do for this current fiscal year? What are you proposing to do for the upcoming fiscal year?" Seven employers responded, and for the current fiscal year, their increases averaged 3.7%. And for the upcoming fiscal year, 2425, they're projecting the same, 3.7% average increase. So when we look at this in a table form, you can see we've included data for the last four, last three fiscal years and the current fiscal year in the table above with the actual percentages shown. And for fiscal year 2021, we were pretty closely aligned, the city and GUC, with those surveys and benchmarks. Beginning with fiscal year 2122, we started lagging the market a little bit, and so that was one of the reasons why we did the true-up study a year, two years ago, and to try to get us back on track. Looking at fiscal year 2324, you can see Catapult was at 4.2%, the public sector 5.5%, private sector 3.7%, and the city and GUC was at 2%. For the upcoming fiscal year, the projection is, as shown, for each of those, Catapult, again, 3.7%, the public sector 5.3%, and the private sector 3.7%. And of course, the city and GUC is to be determined based on your action here. So the action that we're requesting is that you approve a 4% pay adjustment for fiscal year 2425, applied as deemed appropriate by each entity. Do you have any questions at this time?
Any questions from the council?
Any questions from commissioners?
Actually, I do.
Councilmember Blackburn?
This is just an across-the-board, this is an across-the-board increase. It's not tied to merit or anything like that. It's just across the board.
Well, it's, it's applied as deemed appropriate by each entity, so each entity gets to decide how they wish to allocate it. Okay, thank you.
Do we need a motion to approve? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Scully. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Can I get a motion to approve the 4% pay adjustment from GUC?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Moving on to item number three, is consideration of salary structure adjustment for fiscal year 2024-25. Again, turn it over to City of Greenville Director of Human Resources Leah Futrell for the presentation.
Every year, we also examine the salary structure to ensure that we're market competitive. And our compensation consultant, Segal, recommended that we do this each and every year. So this upcoming fiscal year is no different. And we use, we use World at Work, their comp index that's used worldwide for their salary structure projection, and they are projecting a salary, an increase to salary structures of 2.6% for 2024. So the action requested, in order to maintain market competitiveness, adjust the Joint Pay Plan salary structures by 2.6% for fiscal year 2024-25. Any questions?
Any questions from the council? Councilmember Blackburn?
So when you put it both together, does this mean the possibility of, pardon my math, does this mean the possibility of a 6.6% increase? No, it doesn't, okay. You all know math.
No, it's not your math, it's just that the 2.6% adjustment applies to the salary structures, not to wages. So it only impacts those who are, like, new employees who would have to be, their salary would have to be increased to the new minimum, but that's just the new employee, very, so that's a very small subset of employees.
Yeah, and Councilmember Blackburn, the each, every employee is assigned to a pay grade. And basically, what this does is it adjusts the pay grade minimums, the medians, and the maximum up 2.6% so that we can keep up with the market.
That makes sense, and yes, that, I forgot, that was kind of what we were talking about here. So that makes good sense. And what that also does, if I understand correctly, it means that we give a market adjustment, a salary increase, to current employees, and folks coming in are not coming in under the old, out-of-date salary structure. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, any other questions from the council? Motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Scully, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Can I get a motion to approve the salary structure adjustment?
So moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
All right, now, thank you, Mayor. Item number four, consideration of 401K employer contribution. Now, I'll call forward GUC Director of Human Resources Richie Shreves for the presentation.
Thank you. So as Mr. Cowan said, we are looking at the consideration of a change to the 401K employer contribution. Currently, GUC employees and City of Greenville employees receive a $40 per pay period for 401K contribution. What you'll see on the screen is a list or a chart that has the 20 largest North Carolina municipalities listed, GUC being the, excuse me, Greenville being the 12th largest in North Carolina. What you'll see there is that with the exception of Greenville, all of the other municipalities provide a percent 401K contribution, and those percentages average 3.8%. In your memo that you received last week, you saw a similar chart attached to that memo. At the bottom of that chart, though, there were, I believe, 10 more local municipalities listed, such as Winterville, even here in Pitt County, Pitt County was listed, Trillium, I believe, New Bern Wilson, some neighboring communities. What you would notice on that is those, pretty much all of those on that list were providing 5% or close to it. Again, it's more than what Greenville is offering. Because of the fact that 401K is another piece of how we attract and retain employees, we're coming to you with the action that's on your screen. What we'd like to do is increase the 401K contribution from $40 per pay period to a 3% per pay period. That would be effective fiscal year 2425, and it will be for full-time employees and part-time 30 employees. This does exclude sworn law enforcement because they are already, by state statute, receiving 5%. We would main, we would recommend maintaining the current 401K employer contribution of $40 per pay period for those employees in designated part-time positions who might be adversely impacted by changing it to 3%. And then, thirdly, we would, funding permitted, ask that we increase the 401K employer contribution by a quarter of a percent each fiscal year until we, excuse me, we reach 3.75%, at which time we would reevaluate for market competitiveness. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
I do have a question. So the $40 per pay period that is in place right now, what does that equate 2% wise? If we're wanting to increase it to 3%, what is the percent right now, would you say?
Well, what I can tell you is, if you look at the chart, the 3% would fall in line with Charlotte at the top. I'm sorry, I may have said that wrong. What was your question again? I'm sorry. After I sort of answered, I thought, you know what, that's not the question she asked me.
No, I was just wondering, with the $40 per pay period, what would that look like percentage-wise? If we're wanting to increase it to 3% per pay period, then I'm just wondering, what's the percentage currently on average?
Um, I don't know. Did we ever figure what that percentage was?
With the exception of just a couple of employees for each organization, everyone's under 3% right now.
Yeah, and so I'm thinking it was like 1% maybe at best.
I would add that, at a, to be very aggressive with it, it would be 2%. It's less than 2%.
Right.
2% or less. And that would be at the very high end, 2%.
I just wanted to have an idea of comparison, so.
Councilmember Daniel, I'm sorry. Mayor Proton Daniels?
So select part-time employees. Exactly who would that be?
It's part-time 30. Part-time 30.
30 hours.
Yeah. There are some part-time 20 employees, but they don't qualify for 401K benefits. So we're talking part-time 30 employees and full-time employees.
Thank you.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Now, I know you said this, but just to be really clear, nobody will receive less of a contribution once this is changed.
Absolutely.
If the $40, if it was going to be less than the $40, you still get what you're getting now.
Yes, ma'am. That's what the second bullet pertains to.
And for those folks, if there's going to be an incremental increase, for folks who have that flat contribution, do they see any, any change or not until they get to the percentage?
That's correct.
Okay.
It would be, remain $40, and then once they reach the dollar threshold, which I believe, if I remember the math right, I think it was around $34,666, at that point, they would switch to a 3% contribution.
Your math was right on.
Okay. I left off the 67 cents.
I computed that, so.
Thank you.
Now, I do have one more question. Do they have the choice if they would like to increase it?
Yes, ma'am. So this is a contribution that the companies make to the employees, but employees can participate on their own if they want to add additional money.
And that's the $40 as well? Say I wanted to add 80, I mean, an additional 40?
If an employee wants to participate in the 401K and put their own money into it, it's based on a percentage already. So they would say 1%, 2%, whatever they would like to do.
And Councilmember Daniels, there's a max every single year that employees can contribute. I believe it goes up to like $17,000, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere in that range. So in addition to what the employer contributes, the employee contribute out of their own check, up to a certain amount, which I think is like $17,000 annually.
Thank you.
It's 22.5 or something.
Oh, yeah, it's been a while since I've looked at it. They, they know it.
You're the money man.
They know.
All right, any other question from, from the council?
Questions from GUC?
Do we have a motion to approve by the council?
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Mayor Proton Daniels, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Passes six zero.
Can I get a motion from GUC for the 401K changes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Oh, okay. All right, well, without objection, the Greenville GUC side stands adjourned.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn on the city side?
Motion.
Second.
All right, a motion was made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Disposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
We are adjourned.